A call to order, regular council meeting at 6:06 PM. Jill, you want to do a roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilor Pontenin?
Here.
Councilor Heitzman?
Here.
Council President Polis?
Here.
Councilor Skencic?
Here.
Also in attendance, we have City Attorney Lindsay, City Engineer Jammnik, Operations Director Lotiger, Campground Manager Flanagan, and Clerk Zoller.
And Tom is absent with no...
Tom is absent, however, he is listening but will not be speaking as he is not using his voice.
All right, we've determined a quorum. Can we please rise and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have one addition that I'll bring up under my comments is training for our water, wastewater employee. They are going to take a test for a type 4 bio solids, so we'll be adding that on for his hotel stay of September 12th through the 14th, three days per diem, in a hotel of about $500.
Okay, then you want to make a motion on that?
I'll move.
Got a motion from Jeremy, supported by Heitzman. Any discussion?
Who's the person that's going for the training?
Justin Reiman, he's our water, wastewater. Correct.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries, four to zero. Next, we have the consent agenda.
The only thing I'd like to point out, Ms. Zoller, is that I actually wasn't present for the working session last time on the 25, July 25. It gives me more credit than I'm due, so if you can scratch my name, then I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Or with changes?
With that one change.
I'll support it.
Okay, I have a motion from Skencic, or sorry, Heitzman, supported by Skencic. Do we have any discussion?
Just the one correction.
Just the one correction. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries, four to zero. Do we have anyone for public input? Is he here? Is he not on, he's not on Zoom, is he? No? Okay, I guess, well, public input's closed, I guess. Reports from Mayor and Council. Bob?
Well, the only thing, I was curious about Splash Town is now offering tent space for rent down there on their parcel online. So, I didn't, I think they're kind of overstepping their boundaries a little bit.
I didn't know about that.
It was online where I saw this, so. So, does anybody know anything about it?
No, it's first I've heard of it.
That's the first I've heard of it, no.
I had not heard of anything.
You seen that online?
It was online, yeah, as an advertisement.
Okay.
Yeah, they were putting up canopies, you could rent the shade.
Oh, I see. Campground Director?
Well, this is a city, though, because it's...
I don't know if Wendy's seen anything.
I haven't heard anything about that. But I do know that they are not allowed to camp overnight down there.
Correct.
So, if they're doing that, then they're violating...
Well, they're just putting up canopies, so when you go there in the afternoon, you're in the shade waiting.
Oh, a cabana.
Yeah, like picnic, you bring your cooler.
We're not talking about tent, like sleeping, we're talking like shade area.
Right, and I didn't think that that was allowed.
And that goes back to the discussion that we had in the working session about, what's the word that you were? Conditional permit?
Yeah, conditional use.
That's not really one of the conditions of their use permit, I would think.
No, it is not.
We never had one, so we gotta, you know...
Wasn't there a pavilion down there anyway that has the shade? So, if they're expanding on, I know there was complaints about parking on the grass and everything, which I think got addressed now, right?
So, this is, the only comment I have to make in reply to your concern is, this is a first-year trial basis, and we're going to run into things that we're going to need to discuss with them, yeah?
And that's why maybe they need to be told that, I don't know, if it's acceptable to you guys, I thought we were just giving them that one part of the, you know, if they're taking over more public area with this, I don't think that's right.
You just brought it to our attention, and I don't think any of us even knew about that.
Right, I didn't know about it until the other day where I saw the actual advertisement for it.
Did they say they were renting canopies, or just...
Yeah, or I believe they're renting, if the word...
And it's on their website.
Yes, maybe you could look, I don't know if anybody has access to Splash Town's advertisement.
Go ahead, Brian.
Mr. President, if I may, we may want to reach out to them and find out a little bit more information, because there's a couple of different ways, I think, that this could be, based on what I'm hearing, there's a couple of different ways that it could be happening. If what they're doing is expanding the space that they're taking up, they're setting the canopies up and then renting out that space, that may cause some issues, because then they're taking up a larger footprint and they're commercially utilizing some of the city's space.
And how does that become a safety issue?
And the second way it could happen, the alternative is, if what they're doing is they're, you know, they've got a canopy, one of these quick set of canopies, and they're renting it out, and, you know, somebody could come up to them and say, "I want to rent a canopy," and they could take it to a place on the beach and set it up, you know, just as they could bring one from home. That may be a little bit different, but I think it's definitely worth asking some additional questions about.
I will, and it could be that this is part of their floating, you know, part of their floating structures, that they actually have floating rafts with canopies, and it's part of what they're...
It's possible.
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know either, I was just wondering if anybody else had heard about it.
I will make myself, I will volunteer to go and do a little snooping this week, probably tomorrow or the next day. And see what I can...
Right, find out.
And if you want to bring your swim trunks.
Well, look at the advertisement too on your phone, and then you can also...
I'll go right to the source that they can show me. So, there it is. All right.
Anything else?
That's all I have to say on that.
All right, Councilor Heitzman? Got anything?
Yeah, donate blood if you can, blood banks low. That's my goodwill.
Jeremy?
I don't have anything.
Okay, the only thing I'd like to add is, we're still looking for plenty of people to jump on the boards, commissions. I don't know if planning the zoning has enough yet, so they can't even have a meeting, there's so many that are short. So, if you want to try to make a difference in town, you know, we'd really appreciate you signing up. So, always talk to Jill or the mayor, or any of us, and we'll point you in the right direction. All right, reports from staff and boards and commission. Fire Chief didn't have anything.
Actually, I've got to bring something up on his behalf.
Okay.
Just a budgeted item, we discussed it earlier in the working session, but he did have a few of their tanks that needed to be inspected. The gentleman called and said he'd be here this week, so we went ahead and allowed them to do that without coming to the board first, but again, it's a budgeted under maintenance item every year, but just to let everybody know that, yes, they're going to have some tanks inspected so they can continue to be used.
So, we probably need to make a motion for that now?
What are they, SCBA? Is that how you say it? Yeah, those bottles.
I'll make the motion to approve the expense of having the air tank bottles checked.
I got a motion, do I have a support?
One second.
Support from Pontenin. Any discussion?
Retroactive approval, I guess, if that's a thing.
Which the charter will be looking at, changing that approval rate, or amount, I should say. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, four to zero. City Attorney Brian?
No formal report, I am happy to answer questions if there are any.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Attorney Lindsay? All right, thank you. Police Ty teacher is not here. Are you speaking on his behalf, Jill, or are we waiting for him?
He's got a few things on the item, and I believe they, he's either out on the field or his commission meeting, he'll probably come in after.
We'll come back to him, then. City Engineer John Jammnik?
No formal report.
Okay.
Just agenda items, thank you.
Anybody got any questions for City Engineer? No? Thank you. Sam, you got any, anything to discuss?
I'm not, I don't have much to discuss, but I'll just kind of tell you what's kind of been going on. We had a little issue with the garbage truck, I think it was last week, the week before. One of the turbo, the turbo, not one of them, but the turbo went out on it and ended up costing us about $4,500. Just a part we needed to go get. I called around by about four different spots, called down to even a couple of used parts, truck dealerships or spots, and nobody had anything, so we ended up having to go buy a new one. But it was at $4,500 bucks. I ended up even calling down to McQueen to see if they had any good used garbage trucks coming in, and they don't have nothing for about a year, year and a half.
Right. It's hard to find stuff nowadays.
Yeah, just to let council know, you know, we had to buy a $4,500 turbo, so. But that's just one of the deals we deal with. Do the best we can.
Which goes back to our discussion at the special session with the raising and the proper coating and whatnot, so.
Yep, so, did our due diligence, I believe, and whatnot, and then, you know, it was on the agenda too last week. It's on the agenda now, too, same thing with the water plant. We had Thielen come and do the annual inspection. They checked well five, which I don't think well five was rehabbed since like 2014 or something like that. We pulled the pump, and pump was out of spec. Actually, not the pump was out of spec, the motor was out of spec. I think they checked like the end play in the motor, and if that, if it moved so much up and down, it sounds like, they changed out the motor. The pump didn't go, but it will eventually take out the pump if you don't change out that motor. So, we do our due diligence there and, you know, take the recommendation. Then they also had to change out a couple of six-inch pipe, too. The pipe that goes into the well, you can see where it was starting to corrode and where the couplers were corroding. So, we changed out two sections out of the three. So, we were able to reuse the third one, and that one's towards the top of the well, so. So, yeah, otherwise, they will be sending a video of that, which they said in the future it's going to be needed to be cleaned again, like we did down, and I think it is 2012 or 14, if I remember right, where they came in and, well, we had Peterson do it last time, they came in and plungered it, where it pushes back like the sand and that, and then they use a substance to clean the screens. I think we had Thielen do that on well three, where they jetted it, if I remember right. So, that's going to be coming up probably in the next three to five years, I would say, so.
Okay.
Little heads up on that, but they'll be sending a video for that and recommendations, too, so. Other than that, we've been doing some work up at cemetery. I know we, they were cleaning, brushing out some streets last week when I was gone, so, just kind of ongoing stuff. Hopefully, we can get to that cemetery project next week, is what I'm hoping, so we'll see, see what we can do.
Now, Tom mentioned something about, somebody said something about there was some bad water or something, did that get taken care of?
Yeah, yeah, I know, last week we had some issues at one residence, and when I came back from a couple days vacation, I...
Do you know what it was, or what caused it, or?
No, I don't know. But we went and tested the water, everything's fine. It could be just some sitting in a line for a few days where you don't use it, and you get a bad smell or whatnot, I don't know. But everything tested out good. I know I flushed the hydrants and whatnot, too, so.
Okay. All right.
Other than that, they don't have anything else.
So, we probably need to make a motion to approve the turbo? Right? I got a motion to approve the turbo purchase?
I'll move to support that.
A motion from Heitzman, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support from Jeremy. Any discussion?
Well, I don't know if this is the time for the discussion, but, you know, the G-men offer this service, and you just had an example of what this garbage truck is going to be doing to us, and we have no funding to get a new one. So, I think it's time we start looking hard into contracting out that service.
Okay, we'll have to keep that in mind there. All right, so we got a motion and support on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries, four to zero. Anything else, Sam?
No.
All right, thank you.
I've got one thing for a sec.
Go ahead.
And actually, this is for Sam, but for everybody here, too. Winter will be here shortly, and we've got a 1984 squirt sitting down in the arena right now. Do you have somewhere to put that for the winter? That would be...
Outside. That's supposed to be the only spot we've got for it. Just be outside, you know, outside, park and drain it all and whatnot. If we are going to use it at public works, we'd be ripping off the back body anyways, you know, so. You know, but it's up to the council to, you know, decide what we're going to do with it. Maybe that's where I can do a little research on what it's going to cost to do a dump body on the back here over the next couple of weeks, and come back with an idea of just a ballpark figure, you know. I'll talk to some people and see what a new one would cost, new dump body, or maybe we can just go to some couple local contractors, have some scrap trucks around with some dump bodies on it and we can put on there, so.
I mean, if that's the road we're thinking of going...
It's, like I say, it's up to the council.
But there's nothing more that's going to deteriorate that thing than sitting outside.
Oh, right.
I mean, it's gonna, the sun's gonna beat it up pretty bad along with the weather.
You know, and I don't know if that's something I thought to put on do bid or min bid or something like that. I know, I believe we could put on min bid. That's where, I've seen other towns put stuff, but I would have to find out if we can or not through the state. So, it's just an option where we can go.
If you want to look into getting a dump box, that's... Do we make a motion for you to do that?
No, I'll just do it, I'll just do it here over the next couple of weeks and kind of come back, try to come back with some information for you guys.
So, let's see what, or if you did get that retrofitted, have a dump body put on it, a dump box put on it, then where would you put it? Do you have space to keep it? Is it still going to be outside?
It'd be outside, yeah, we don't have any room. We're moving stuff around, we're, yeah, it's just, just our, we're small there, so.
Is it worth replacing one of your older, the worst truck?
No, because that truck would just haul snow.
Okay.
That's all it would do, it was haul snow.
So, you would just put a dump box on the back of it?
Just a dump box on, you know, with, in haul snow, maybe, maybe in the summertime, if we're hauling sand, we'd use that instead. But, yeah, that's all it would strictly be, it's just outside, and...
No poles, no nothing, just the box?
No, yeah, no, because with a new truck coming here in the end of, probably the end of February, early March, then we would take that yellow one and put that one outside next to it, and, you know, that maybe could be backup, or maybe that one goes down the road, you know, I don't know. But, yeah, we'll have, we'll have a couple good plow trucks then, and, you know, it's one thing is because of scrapers underneath those plow trucks are the big thing that save us, and whatnot, and I don't know how that length of truck would deal with on the hills and whatnot either, but.
Okay, that was all.
Yeah, I guess, you know, it's going to get minimal use, so maybe we just look at getting rid of it, because it'll just be hanging around the ice or wherever it sits, you know. I don't know, but I guess look into and see what the cost would be if it's...
I mean, that's something we can make that, even if we put it out there, we put a minimum on it, if it doesn't, if we don't get at least this for it, why give it away, I guess? So, then the question that I have is, if you wind up putting a dump box, in order to get rid of it for any value, for any compensation, would we be better off to invest in putting a dump box on it, then trying to sell it? Is it more marketable as a dump truck than as a fire engine with, you know, zero value to anyone? It's still a...
Isn't that frame a little longer than a normal?
Probably.
So, you'd have to get a longer dump box, and, you know, I don't think, it's only duals, so I don't know how much weight you'd be able to put on it, as far as snow, there's no problem, but gravel or anything else, you might not be able to put anything in there.
I don't know what the girl's vehicle is on.
A box, they call them, which is, instead of the big high sidewalls, it would be maybe a two-foot or a three-foot sidewall on the dump box side, and then we would just put plywood or whatnot to haul snow, but...
Even vinyl box, you could go to vinyl, too. You wouldn't even need steel.
So, that's where I was looking at it, and, you know, maybe a landscape company or a small contractor might look at a value into that. What is it worth? 20 grand, 15 grand, I've seen some nice trucks like that for sale.
I just get to see it sit outside, get beat up, and then we decide, wow, we're not going to do anything, let's get rid of it.
One of the positives, it does only have, what, 20, 25,000 miles on it?
8,000.
8,000, yeah, so, you know, the only bad thing is, is it's super low geared, so, you know, that's the other thing. But it would have been nice to be able to try to offer, like when the Crawl for the Cure guys were up, offer it for sale, to see what they would have paid for it, because a lot of them guys would make camper out of it, or a tow rig, or something like that, you know.
Put a trailer bed on it.
Two good points got brought up, one, Heitzman brought up, the market value is more, speaking on personal experience of doing this stuff on a daily basis constantly, is, the market values more when you do a dump box on it or something, there's more value there than there is just a body, because the trouble you have to go through to do all that, you gotta adjust the frame, all that stuff, it takes a lot of time and work. The other thing we maybe need to look at is, we have the storage units up here that RC put in, maybe they have room up there in one of them that we could put it in or something, to keep it, and I know it's not heated, but...
It won't fit.
It won't fit in any of them?
No, it's too tall.
Or maybe just keep it up there where it's, you know, under, under gate and lock and whatever, but, so. All right, off track a little bit, but. All right, you had nothing else, Sam? Okay. Campground host Wendy?
Hello, everybody. Everything's been going pretty good at the campground. We did have a little shenanigans going on. Some young people, or whatever, I'm assuming it's young people came in the middle of the night, and whether stealing some beer, pop, and throwing things at campers, and everything. I did notify Ty, let him know that this was going on, and so hopefully, they make a few extra rounds through the campground, might deter any more activities like that. But, that's the first time it's happened this year, so we've been doing really good as far as not having anything stolen, but this last week, we had, out of three different sites, just popping beer. They didn't take any coolers or anything, but they were looking for alcohol, I'm sure, but, so hopefully, whoever's involved with these issues will understand that we're not going to let that happen again. So, we're going to keep a better eye out, and I told campers to call me in the middle of the night when things are happening. I can't do anything about it the next day.
Right.
So, but, other than that, everything's been going really well.
Okay.
So, and that's all I have.
I think the Crawl for the Cure was a decent success, if you ask me.
Oh, yeah.
It was a good turnout, and...
Wonderful.
I even got some gear from them, so, support them a little bit, and it looked like a lot of people were having fun and whatnot, so.
Yeah.
Full campground and everything there, so.
Oh, yeah, and this next year, apparently, there was an issue with people reserving sites that hadn't registered for the crawl. And they were a little upset about that, so we're going to do something different this next year to ensure that it's Crawl for the Cure members that are registering to camp there for the event, not just someone coming up wanting to, you know...
So, was there random people that were in there then, that event?
There was a couple, yeah.
Was there?
They didn't register with Crawl for the Cure. So, we're gonna, I'm not going to open up reservations till after registration, they open their registration, and then they'll be given a registration number to give me, so that I make sure that everybody's with the cure that comes in.
Yeah, we, me and the mayor, we did walk through there during that event, and we did see that there was a few oddballs, but we just figured they were seasonal.
Yeah, we have a few seasonals, but, no, there was a couple campers in there that probably shouldn't have got snuck in there.
Okay, other than that, it was pretty good success, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and a lot of the campers that were out in the overflow area said that they liked that better because it was quieter, that they enjoyed not having the ATDs running around through the circle of the campground, so.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you.
I got one more thing I gotta talk to the council about. I got, I talked to our city electrician, and he mentioned that it'd be about $250 per light to change over to LEDs for the lights going down to the beach and the ones in the campground. I was just wondering if council wants me to proceed with having those changed out to LEDs at 200 per pole, or if we wanted to look at doing something else. The poles seem in pretty decent shape, they don't, they're not rotted out or anything like that. You know, but that's, that's...
How bright?
They would be equivalent to what's there, like a 300, I think what's there is like a 300-watt light bulb, so they'd be equivalent to what's there.
Just so people aren't having to put suntan lotion on at night or something.
So, yeah, they're like a sodium vapor or mercury halide bulb that's there, and we would just be going to an LED. I believe they do make a smaller LED if these ones get to be too bright and we have issues.
So, there are several of the lights out in the campground and going down to the beach.
I noticed that.
So, they need bulbs anyway.
Council President, if I may, the LED lights, they're brighter, but they have a less of a cone shape, so they don't illuminate as far out, if that helps.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Paul.
So this was one of the items that came, came up kind of tangentially at our last board meeting. The comment that came back, we didn't take any action on, but the comment came back that we'd like to have Sam explore more of an amber color, if possible, rather than a white. It's a little bit more, it's a little bit more gentle on the eyes. It's not quite as intrusive to campers, but it still offers the brightness. So that would be the suggestion that we had.
Yeah. I guess if they've got that, like an off-white, like you say.
How about blue? I've seen blue at a couple of.
Well, Super One has like.
Blue.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
You see that?
Bright.
I don't know if that's for a, the light, you know, so it's not so bright.
I believe so.
That's why, but.
Because it's easy to drive by there when they're on. It doesn't blind you.
Right.
Some of them are really bright.
So I can, I can look into different, different options for us.
Can you, can you look into different and then just come back to the council in two weeks and?
I can, yeah, I can.
Make a decision?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sam.
How many lights are we talking?
Eleven. Yeah. There's eleven of them, so you're talking 1,200, 1,300 dollars just for the bulbs. And there'd be maybe about 20 minutes at each light. You know, it'd be days of electricians' work to go up and they gotta take out the ballast and rewire it a little bit different. And then you bypass that ballast and whatnot there.
Yeah, if you can get us, get us some quotes and, and what it's going to cost for the parts and the labor, then let us know.
Can do.
All right, library director, Sue?
Hey, how's it going, everybody, this evening? I have, let's see, good news and bad news. I have, we've had a very successful summer, great reading group, everything's going well. But my bad news is I'm losing my library cleaner due to family constraints. So she will be turning in her resignation. I will be advertising for a new library cleaner. And they can, well, they can actually start now. They can come and get an application and find out what is involved. And that is it. Any questions, people?
Is that something we have to make a motion for, for her to go out for that, Brian?
Correct. I think, I think the library can follow the process through, but they should send the final candidate up to us for ratification.
Okay. That sound good, Sue?
I think so.
You make the recommendation and bring it to the council and then we'll approve it?
Right.
Okay.
Right, like we did with Barr.
Sure.
I'll be getting her resignation, turn that into the council. And then we'll put out the, well, through the website and through you guys and through some advertising. And then we do the applications, but then I turn that over to you, which is like we did with Barr.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I've got something up my sleeve that I love to talk to the council and the mayor about, that I found some money in. Thinking about doing a little decorating inside. It's all okay with you, but we will look through it ourselves, guys, and I want you to come have a look. So we'll set up a meeting, okay?
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Anybody got any questions for Sue?
No.
No? All right.
Thanks, Sue.
Advisory boards.
Couple of quick updates. First one is from the charter commission, just to let council know that we've been working, but for this month, we've changed our meeting dates to the 16th and the 30th to accommodate Attorney Lindsey's schedule. We have a number of different questions for him and we need to have some good sit-down time with him to get advice and direction. So that was the reason for the change. I'm not sure if that needs to actually be posted anywhere that that date has changed or if that is just be updated on the calendar, but. As far as the campground items, we met this past week. Our first item on the, on our agenda was to talk about how the crawl went. Jeff Ward from the crawl was there. We had a lot of good, robust discussion about how we can improve for next year. I volunteered to be a community representative, local community representative on their planning board for this next year. And so we'll be looking for other ways to engage the city, to engage local businesses, to engage the, the community through part of that, and also to be a connection point on the ground in town for them, which I think it's something that they've been looking for for a number of years and they were happy to have, so. But great suggestions all the way around. I think they felt that it was very successful. Reiterating kind of what Wendy, what Wendy said, we'll be working on kind of a process change for next year for registration. They, now that we've separated the lodging aspects from their registration, there wasn't kind of that, that incentive for, for people coming to the event to hurry up and register with them. And so some of the folks kind of slipped through the cracks. So I'm sure, we don't have the exact answer yet, but I'm sure that we'll probably come up with something that will be workable so that they, they reach their goals of having people register for the event and we, you know, reach our goals of having the campgrounds full. So I just think there's some work to be done on that and I'm, I'm pretty sure we'll come up with a reason or a solution. They were pleased with the special event area. Couple of small modifications to that, but I think overall they appreciated having more capacity that will help them to grow for the future, so good comments on that. Next item, just a quick update on the, on the system review. This actually could help us with some of the crawl stuff. So we've gone through and we've demoed two systems right now. We have a third one coming up tomorrow night and we have a fourth one, a fourth and final one that's going to come up at the end of, towards the end of this month. Once we have all four of those, we will, as a committee, we will pick the top two and make a presentation hopefully at a working session to be able to kind of give you the pros and cons of what systems are out there so that you can make a decision as to how to move forward. We're looking at all of the issues that come up, like booking codes and fees for use or different components that different systems have. So there's a lot to digest and so we're hoping to kind of get that down to two for you. And we're expecting a September timeline for that, just so you're kind of aware. And then last, lastly, at our next meeting, we are going to be working on a recommendation to the council, just to let you know that this is coming, if you do want to participate at our next meeting, that we're going to be looking at the Barn Associates master plan as well as all of the things that have happened since then in terms of our recommendations for future developments, different things and different ways that the campground has changed to make a recommendation for council to move forward with a five to seven-year plan development. So that's kind of, those are the high-level things that we're at, working on right now and what you can look forward to. So if you have any questions, please feel, feel free to reach out to me.
Yeah, I just got one note. You can clarify this or not. Didn't the state come through the Crawl for the Cure and inspect the spaces between? And they said they gotta be a little bit more?
Yep, we did discuss that in our, in our debrief. And the issue, I think, is maybe not necessarily the issue with the actual space, but how we marked the spaces. I think that we got the square footage, but we have to focus more on, you know, within, within the box of what that square footage is. The unit has to be parked here so that there is sufficient space between units. So it was a learning experience for us. I think we've got some room for improvement in how we mark that for next year. The inspector did mention that we could have used more porta-potties on the, the side where the campers were, and so that will also be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
There was an issue with, what they had said is there was big campers parked next to big campers. And if I, if I kind of adjust that, so there's a big camper and then a small camper.
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't have the issue. Because when you put two big campers side by side with their pullouts.
Yeah.
They were too close.
Okay. All right. Advisory boards, that's time. Clerk Treasurer, Jill? Oh, yeah, let's go back to Ty. Welcome, Ty. Do you have anything for us?
Commission me went late again. I have nothing other than what's on the agenda. If you have questions of me. There is one item, I'm not sure if it's.
The purchase of the squad car?
Yep.
I, I do have a question about the letter. Who, who writes these for you? Because these are really well-written, really well-fought-out, chief, and hats off. I mean, it's.
Well, I learned a long time ago, you need to justify your actions, so I've become a more creative writer.
So these are fantastic. Every time you hand something in, it's, it's top-notch.
Well, I just want to give you guys answers or kind of my thought of, my thought of thinking.
You put in the homework, you have all the questions presented and answered all in one. So hats off, I'll give you kudos right there. That's all I got.
Yeah, I'm, the biggest thing is I'm a little bit concerned with, they're going to phase out the Dodge Charger. And that's, you know, the Chargers are so much cheaper than, we see other agencies run the SUVs. They're $7,000 more, if not 8,000 is. So we're going to try to stick with the Charger as long as they'll make them, so.
Okay. So you're looking for the approval for the purchase of the Charger from Waschke's, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And just to fill you in, you weren't here for the earlier discussion. We're looking at having the Charger change the amount for the pre-approvals and stuff like that so that you guys can, you know, understand where your budget is. Like you always, you always do good with your budget and stuff. So we want to give you guys more leeway to just make decisions on your own because you're put in the position because we trust your judgment. So that is getting looked at. And Brian, did you ever, did you come up with the, the rate or the, when we have to go for two estimates, if we have to go with the lower bid or, just so we're clear on that?
Only when you reach certain thresholds that are in excess of 25,000.
So it is 25,000 above? Okay.
As long as we're under 25,000, I think there's, there's a good multiplier.
Well, it looks like this one is, the lowest bid is Waschke's at 33,866 and they're local. So do I have a motion to approve Ty's purchase of the squad car, which is a budgeted item?
Mr. President, I, I would note, I just checked with the chief, that price is state bid, so it qualifies, it meets all the criteria we need.
Perfect.
I'll move.
Move from Heitzman. I have a support.
One second.
Support from Pottingen. Do you have any discussion? No discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion approves, four to zero. Anything else, Ty?
Uh, no, just the last couple of months been pretty busy. We had, I believe, 655 calls. I'll put them in your mailbox. I just printed them off here a little bit ago. So June through July, we had 655 calls. So a few burglaries were kind of the big ones and a few other items. So it was, been a pretty steady summer for us.
Okay. Yeah, and then Wendy was talking about a fluke where they came through the campground and, but I think they hit Virginia too because somebody spray painted a bunch of stuff in Virginia in different towns and I don't know if it was just a bunch of kids running around causing trouble or what it was. So.
All right. Same kid Steven Wendy's beer.
Yeah, that's what I mean. All right, Clerk Treasurer, Jill?
Thank you. First of all, I'll give a financial update. So currently we have in the general account 790,979.58 less approved invoices, bills, payroll and this consent agenda leaves it at 705,170.27. Campground currently is 125,416.96 and that is after June's expenses have been transferred to the general. Aside from that, just kind of give you an update, there are. Okay, let's start again. If you, if I could get an action from the council to go ahead and approve the additional item we had earlier discussed for our water, wastewater treatment. Mr. Ryman, he's going to be attending training in Mankato to become a type four biosolids operator. Training testing from September 12th to September 14th. With hotel per diem mileage, it comes to approximately $500.
I would make the motion to approve Justin Rameen's training at the, wherever that is, that he gets certified.
Yeah, I have a motion on the table to approve the training, do I have support?
No support.
Support from Jeremy. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you and thank you for the pronunciation correction. Appreciate that.
Try to be discreet.
I've had some complaints at the changing rooms down at the camp, or not campground, I'm sorry, at the beach are nasty. So they're, I don't know if we contracted out, who does that, but evidently there's been shenanigans going on down there and they're, they're kind of gross. So we had some scuba divers down there wanting to utilize them and they made a report that they were pretty bad. So I don't know, Sam, if you guys can take a look or who. Perfect, then it's.
They were clean.
Okay, so somebody cleaned it since then, but.
I mean, we clean them weekly.
Okay.
I send the guys down there every morning. They do a sweep of the beach, they pick up all the garbage, trash.
Perfect.
And then they clean change houses.
So it was probably in between or over the weekend?
It was probably over the weekend, but we're, we're not on staff on the weekend.
Correct.
And, you know, I usually check it once, once or twice a year, just or a week to go down there. And then I, you know, because sometimes people pee in there or do dumber stuff in there. And we actually have to wash it out and it didn't smell or anything like that, so.
Perfect.
And, yeah, it's, we check it regularly.
Perfect, thank you. Scuba Palooza is the weekend of the 19th. Sounds like it's going to be a pretty big event. Public Works is going to put some signs down as they will utilize the pavilion. And as you know, we voted last time, we're not going to rent out the pavilion any longer. It'll be first come, first served aside from this event. And then we do on the 26th have a big event that we're honoring just because they paid. But after that, it will be first come, first served. I've made that clear with Splash Town as well, not to, you know, utilize that for their own business and, you know, keep that for our regular patrons down there. And I also did discuss that if they could park up on the top level, you know, that would be helpful as well. So we have more room for individuals. I would like to get approval for the administrative assistant hiring. The committee did pick one individual that had excellent credentials and interviewing skills, Marion Delage. So if we could, after reference checks and background, if we could extend an offer to her.
And what was her name?
Marion Delage from Bywobek.
So I would make the motion to extend that offer pending the background.
And reference checks, correct.
Pending the background and reference checks?
Correct.
Got a motion from Heitzman, do I got a support?
No support.
Support from Pottingen, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
An update on the utility billing clerk. The hiring committee is doing a holdout at this point and looking a little deeper and doing a little harder inquiry on the candidates before making a final decision. First responders, I would like a motion to have the first responders extend for their new hire Cora Buck pending background checks and their process.
And that was put forth by Peter McCosky?
Thank you, Director.
I would make that motion pending background check and reference.
Got a motion from Heitzman. Do I have support?
No support.
Support from Jeremy, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
And then if I could get an approval, I know it's a budgeted item as we stated. I don't think we did the actual approval, but for the testing equipment for the SCBA tanks to be inspected, it is a regularly budgeted maintenance item, but they came this week, so we didn't have time to get it to the board before they came. And again, that saves us money by, they were here, so we're not paying additional fees to bring them back.
Small move.
Yeah.
Well, support, I thought we did that already.
Did we? I couldn't remember if we did.
Did we?
I thought we just brought it forward.
No, we added it to the agenda, I don't think we.
I think we voted at that time.
Yeah, we didn't vote yet.
Didn't we?
No.
I thought we did, at that time when we added it.
If, if we haven't already approved it, then I will.
We approved it.
Motion to approve the SCBA testing.
Okay, so we have a motion to support, we voted, didn't we?
I think we got it.
Going to. All right, so we have, who made the motion?
Aye.
Heitzman made, or Jeremy made the motion and who supported it?
I will.
Mark supported, okay. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
The last item I have is on the topic of the letter going out for a public hearing. If we could set a date to give the public an update on what the city proposes for utility fees being charged to apartments for payback of that debt. If we could set a date for that, that would be great. We could set the letter, we need to have 10 days publication notice, so it would need to be at least two weeks out minimum.
So do we set it for the next council meeting?
I would even maybe suggest the first in September, just to make sure we have all of our.
Okay.
Dates out there.
Which is?
I believe the fifth.
Fifth at. So that's a public hearing then?
Correct.
Correct? So we gotta have at least, what, 15 minutes or half hour? What do you reckon?
I would probably say a half hour for this one at least.
So about 5:30?
On September 5th.
We got a motion, do we have a motion to set a meeting for, or a hearing for 5:30 on, what is it, September 6th?
September 5th is the first Tuesday in September.
Are we doing a council night or are we doing?
No, we do, we do this.
Are we doing a council night, or are we doing a different thing?
Yeah, we should do the twelfth then, that's the second Tu, second Tuesday.
September twelfth at five-thirty for open meeting for the apartments discussion, or, yeah.
I will now move to do that on the twelfth then.
Okay, we got a motion on the table from Heitzman, support?
No support.
Support from Jeremy, any discussion?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to group some other discussions in on that. Not only apartments, but there's some sanitation or sewer projects too that have to be addressed, that have to be talked about. And we should, if the people oppose, they should be able to come to the hearing also. So it's not just the apartments.
Okay.
So, I'm just, you know, adding that to it. There's gonna be other discussions on other subjects, not just...
On infrastructure.
This is just pretty much setting a date, and we can finalize everything, so.
Do I need to adjust my motion then?
I don't think, I don't think so, right?
We're just setting a time and date for the...
We're just setting a time and date for the, for the public hearing.
Right, yep, public hearing.
Okay.
For, yeah. Inselaneous.
Inselaneous items.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe we have to give it a...
Probably would have to be a reason.
Pardon?
You'd have to have a specific reason for that.
But we can, at the next council meeting, we can finalize that, so.
As long as there's public notice in advance.
Right, that would still be two weeks, yeah.
Of what the meeting is.
Right.
You can, you can add to the agenda so long as you post the agenda within the requisite time period.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero. You have anything else?
Yep, last thing, um, the Eastern Joint Trail Board, we're talking with Evlith and trying to resurrect that again. We're just at this point, starting from scratch, whether we should meet quarterly. Um, I know a couple snowmobile clubs have been taking over the maintenance, you know, how do we interlude them, what expenses both cities are incurring in doing those grants. So we're just, kind of an update, uh, you know, we're gonna try and resurrect that board again and just see where things lie, just so we're, um, adhering to policy with the state for those grants that we're meeting and doing our due diligence for those, for those monies. Um, so that's just kind of an update that, where we're at with that.
Okay.
Um, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
How about the vote on the variance?
Um, that would be, uh, item A, they'll do the vote from the working sessions.
Oh, okay, well, that's next, I guess, anyway, so, yeah.
Alright.
And the request for the charter commission at the same time.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, that brings me back to a point, Ty, I had asked, forgot this question, but when we were down there for the crawl for the cure, me and the mayor took a walk to the rocks where people were jumping off, obviously, it's the first time I've ever been back there. Um, isn't the fine, did we set it at like five-hundred? Some kids say it's at thirty-five, and I'll jump if I want to.
It's now seventy-five. We went up to seventy-five last year, I think, in the tickets, when we changed the, uh, fee schedule, so. And actually, uh, we have, the numbers are way down there. I've done a few walkthroughs, and we've caught one or two back there. Um, it just seems like, we hit it hard last year, I think we're kinda travel special, we hit a lot of those kids from Duluth to Superior. They're not even taking the chance of driving up, wasting an hour to come up if they're just to get turned around.
We asked one kid where they're from, they said Forest Lake.
Yeah, it's, well, we've had stolen, we've, we've had people steal vehicles in St. Paul, drive them up and dump them at the parking lot, and then steal a vehicle here and drive it back down to St. Paul.
Or take an RTV all the way to Wisconsin.
But we've got a pretty good handle on that. Um, I think Facebook has helped us in regards to that. These kids are taking pictures of tickets and saying, "I got hit." And, um, I am seeing a few more cars out on the Genoa side though. And the problem with the Genoa side is, it's a lot of effort for us to get back there. Um, we have to go back on wheelers, or we have to walk over a half mile, but if we have to get back out, we're not...
Is that the one off of, uh, thirty-seven there?
Cedar, uh, the access from Cedar Island Drive, right at the edge of our city limits, and they walk in that way. So we've seen more cars back there, but now that our money's out for ATV patrol, we're not getting back there because we don't have an officer at ATV now, so. Um, but, um, yeah, they, it would, they ended up burning a lot of that stuff out in that backside, well, it makes it harder for us to get back there on the street.
Right.
And it's just not conducive for us to walk back there if there's one officer working, if we have to get back out for a call, so. So I think a lot of them migrated out there. We also encourage them to go to Buell, so. Make it somebody else's problem, so. But we, we've seen the numbers down, and if you look at the calls at the beach, our call volume at the beach is, is down substantially. Um, we've had a few altercations, a couple fights down there in the last couple of weeks, but other than that, it's been really good, so.
So since Splash Town's been there, it's not been too much indifference?
I, I think it's gotten better because I think there's an adult presence down there.
Right.
So it's just, uh, we're finding a few more shenanigans after nine o'clock at night, ten, eleven o'clock. So our squads are pushing them out, ten o'clock, obviously, it's, they're not allowed down there, so we're pushing them out, so. But I think with some adult presence down there, I think it's gotten a little bit better.
Right, okay.
Uh, just on a quick side, as a public service message for anybody thinking about those Genoa pits, twenty years on the fire department, one of the worst things I ever saw was the, the guy that didn't make it to the water, jumping off those cliffs in Genoa, it's just mind-blowing.
It's not worth it.
How damaging that is. Just don't do that, everybody.
And it's not a pleasant trip out of there.
No, it's tough if you have an issue. It's, it's a lot of work.
It's a bad spot.
It's gonna be a bad turnout for everyone.
And, you know, keep in mind, we were served with a lawsuit at one point. It was successfully defended at very little, little cost, but it still costs if we get, it was, we were sued for, I think it was derelict of duty, because we weren't out there. Individual jumped from the seventy-foot and didn't quite jump far enough out and hit the thirty-foot. And pretty much, he had thirteen surgeries.
His legs came out, his legs, remember?
Yes, they came out, yeah. But, um, but that's the other reason why we wanted to enforce it, just because of litigation potential.
Right.
I mean, granted, we successfully defended it, but...
Did the lack of fencing come up in the lawsuit?
They'll, yes, in fact, that's, I think, when it had happened, you noticed that, that's when they excavated a lot of the area, they dug out behind Sparta there on all the access roads. And they fixed most of the fence. The problem with the fencing is that, uh, if they check on it a couple times a year, that's considered, uh, an honest effort, I guess, to try to keep people out of there. So, I don't know where the lawsuit went with, uh, Winona, I think it's Winona Properties or Gigi's Land, I'm not sure, but I think the city is no longer involved, so.
Perfect. One of the things of the fencing, I mean, even we could walk right by it, I mean, you put it up, you guys have made multiple efforts, Sam's put stuff up there to keep them out, they just go right through it, or they, I mean, we asked them, you know, you didn't see the three signs, and they don't even care, so. I mean, it's, it's not the lack of security, they're gonna find a way around it either way.
Yeah, it's just how the law looks at it.
Right. So, okay, moving on.
Also, I wanted to mention that we drive back through the E-loop several times during the evening and are listening for any noise back there. And this year, I haven't heard that much. So I, I agree, I think it's, it's slacked off. But we, we try to, we try to make sure we're checking our area and make sure they're not back there also.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
Yeah, I don't think we've issued more than a dozen tickets this year. Um, I wrote a couple, a couple took off on me and swam across. However, they left their cellphone and car keys on the other side, so. They walked up to the office to get their tickets and their car keys back.
I was gonna say, I bet you they had to come back humble after that one.
Do you need to up that ticket amount?
That's what I was getting to. Do we need to raise it?
No, I think seventy-fives, especially when you get these younger kids, they're getting hit pretty hard. And then again, if they don't pay it, then it goes to collections, and then it goes on their parents' credit rating, so they tend to pay it pretty quickly then.
Okay. Alright, we'll leave it for now, and maybe talk about it for their discussion later on.
One good thing.
Go ahead.
One last thing. Uh, last few years, we've talked about speed signs. Do you have those yet, or are they going up? I know we...
We have them. Throw us one on Sammy.
'Cause it's been a couple of years. Those digital signs?
Are you talking about putting them up in town, or what?
Yeah, there was gonna be one, one in the entry coming from Genoa, Evlith. Was it gonna be one up?
I think it's...
Or one on, one on each end, I'm not sure, I don't know.
What are you looking at? I think we got power on... And we got it on Florida, down to Kansas, down here on the, the south side. Um, north side, we got it, I don't know where we got it, that has to look, I know we got it there. I know we got it on Indiana, but I don't know if it goes any further down. That, that was where I didn't know which way, how far to go. Here it is, E on the south end, we're right at seven, we're near. Down on the north side, we'll name it, or, I'll work on the south side first.
Okay, thanks. Good enough.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alright. Uh, old business, wastewater treatment, water treatment plant update?
Not either of them, they're just waiting to get Magni back down here on the sewer plant, um, and then the water plant, that's just kinda a slow process. Uh, we got a meeting coming up, I believe on that, uh, I believe it's like on the eighteenth or something like that, um, but with Kevin Young, so.
Alright, anybody got any questions on that?
One thing on, I guess, well, it'd be more towards the water end of it. Did, uh, that company ever say anything about the roof? We, we gave them a reply back as far as...
Oh, yeah.
A domed roof, you know, a peaked roof rather than a...
Not heard anything yet.
Okay.
That's right, forgot about that, good, good call there. Alright, so, on the old business, duh, duh, duh. Alright, on to new business, action from working session, which I believe is the...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for the hot tub enclosure.
Motion on the table to approve the variance, I have support?
One second.
For Pottingen, any discussion?
Uh, there were no objections at our open meeting for that, so here, no objections.
Fair enough. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
Um, council president, if I could, I did remember one other thing. Um, as a lot of people know, um, do you want me to wait till they're done?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming.
It must be the hot tub.
I think so.
Yeah.
I was trying to push.
Um, Brian Mackey did call me today, and I don't, I know you guys probably all know the history of Nick's Bar, they've been in the city of Gilbert and operating for a hundred years. And they are doing a, the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, a big celebration for Nick, and is it Vudovic, Bukovich? I'm not sure.
Vuklich.
For their family, all of his relatives, um, descendants will be there. He is doing, um, for the first five-hundred people, they will get a commemorative mug. For those that come down there, they'll be doing celebrations all weekend, so he wanted me to mention that. Um, and I don't know if the council would be willing to have that be Nick Bukovich Day, but, you know, that's what he was asking, so I said I would present that to the council, and...
And that's August twenty-sixth?
That is correct. Big feat, though, for a hundred years of operation for them.
Be a motion for that?
Well, um, Mr. President, if I may? Um, I believe we'll have one, one more meeting before that day. Um, if, if this is something the council's interested in, um, I would be happy to write something up. I, because I think the request was to have a declaration made that it be Nick Bukulich Day on the twenty-sixth of August, uh, as part of the celebration. If, if it's the council's interest to do that, uh, I'd be happy to create a formal document that could be signed, that we could present to Mr. Mackey as the owner of Nick's Bar.
Would you have that letter proofread by Chief Teacher, 'cause he's fantastic.
Absoluteist composition, this is strong point.
Yeah, I agree, because then Tom can have some input in as well, so.
And so to, I, I guess I'm interested in, in having you draft that letter, I don't know. Council President, Polls is?
Yeah, I'm good.
Make a motion on it, or what do you want to do?
I, I think, I don't think we necessarily need a motion. I think this is something we could add to the agenda for the next meeting.
Perfect. Alright, sounds good. Alright, dynamic braking ordinance, first reading.
Well, before this, we could go back to, uh, new business A, uh, to make a motion to relate to the charter commission to up that five-hundred dollars to twenty-five-hundred dollars for all spending approval, does that, did I phrase that properly?
That's correct. Was it, were we going twenty-five-hundred, or?
I think twenty-five-hundred is legit, that's like, finally, you can buy turnout gear without...
Right.
And boots.
Not quite a radio, but...
It all goes back to the, the judgment of the, you know, they know their budget, and...
And again, they're budgeted items, so.
So.
Yep.
So the, I guess the recommendation to the charter commission is to go from five-hundred dollars to twenty-five-hundred dollars before needing council approval for budgeted items.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to, to approve, to, uh, move to the twenty-five-hundred dollars for, before getting approval. I have support?
No support.
Support from Jeremy, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you for reminding me that.
And if we could then approve the, um, policies and procedures that I had on the table for the motion pending attorney approval of wording.
I have... I'll start.
Jeremy, support from Heitzman, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I was just curious, what are we, uh, approving here?
He's, uh, from the working session.
But, but part of that was, uh, part of it was fees on the...
Not the fees, but table of...
Table of...
Any, everything but the fees?
Yeah, it's just the...
Uh, the only discussion that I have is I learned, uh, quite a while ago, the, the difference between a policy and a guideline. I mean, a policy dictates that this must be followed this way. A guideline provides a, a structure that you can...
So I could rename the guidelines?
The ones that you can, the ones that you can. Some, you know, accounting things are actually policies, that this has to be followed. But if it's a structural guideline or performance guideline, I would encourage you to consider that term, so that someone isn't, uh, directly tied to a course of action that isn't always the most effective.
So we could tie that into attorney Lindsey's recommendations between guideline and policy that inform those documents as well?
And, Mr. President, if I may, not to get too far into it, uh, I'll watch the language, and I'll, I'll try and return an opinion, uh, to Clerk Zoller, uh, relative to the language. There's this, uh, the seminal case on this, on, on a certain issue, uh, is the Pine River City, Pine River State Bank case out of Minnesota, which talks about how detail, at what level of detail a policy becomes a contract term for employment. And so we'll insert some language so that we avoid that, and make sure that these are strictly policies and procedures within the city.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, do we have support?
Heitzman did.
Do you support?
I did already, didn't I? Or did I make the motion? I'll support.
Okay.
You supported.
Oh yeah, we were on discussion.
That's right.
Alright, uh, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Alright, so now we're on the braking ordinance first reading. Issue dynamic braking restriction first reading. So do we have to, we don't actually have to read this though, do we? No? Well, we have to make a motion on it, or?
Correct. The, the critical feature is that the language is included within the public materials, so that any member of the public who requests a packet can get a copy of the language. So basically what you do, uh, with the council action today would be, would be to, uh, a motion to recognize the first reading has taken place, or to approve the first reading.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to recognize the first reading of the council ordinance restricting the dynamic braking.
We got a motion on the table to approve, alright, support?
I'll support that.
Support from Pottingen, do we have any discussion? Go ahead.
How does this affect emergency vehicles?
Um, I believe that emergency vehicles are exempted from the operation of this. And emergency situations are also exempted from the operation of this ordinance.
Okay.
This section shall not apply to city emergency vehicles.
Didn't see that part, there is. Whether or not...
It's better to know than to, yeah.
But that doesn't, city emergency vehicles, this may be too vague. Can we scratch city? 'Cause it's not always, it could be...
Someone loses their brakes.
You know, Virginia brings their ambulance in, because that's our ambulance service, it's not a city of Gilbert vehicle.
We, we could make changes to it, but if we make changes to it, it'll need to be reintroduced, and the first reading will have to occur again. and the first reading will have to occur again. It's just a timing issue.
Go ahead, Ty.
I think it's fine.
I think in the spirit of the law, and not the letter law, I think we'd be okay if, I don't know that Attorney Lindsey would prosecute if it was another fire department, or if it was an emergency situation, so I think we could probably look past that.
Would it depend on the police at the situation, or?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a question on that. Is this allowing us now to put signs up for no Jake breaking zones?
I believe once the ordinance is passed, then we will post that, or technically it's supposed to be posted, the city limits signs. So we'll put one on one thirty-five, thirty-seven will be fine. The only issue is gonna be, is on ninety-seven, we may have to put something out by Clyde Road, and I'll have to get approval from the county. So, because the city limit is on the north side of the road. So I'll work with the county in getting signs put right at Clyde Road, because that's right where the city limits are at.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
So we take the vote, I guess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Alright, let's see, motor pump sections of pipe. That was the one we already did, right?
We did the turbo, we did this, I think it's a dollar on this one. Did you get a dollar on that? We just don't have to be done.
Okay, so I get a motion to approve the motor pump press pipe?
I'll move. Motor press pump?
Yeah. Okay, I got a motion.
I'll support.
Alright, support from Jeremy. Any discussion?
So we're getting the cost. We'll discuss that meeting, the cost.
Yeah, well, Bill'll send a bill.
Well, you don't have it yet.
No, we don't have it yet.
It was an emergency situation, so it's different. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Threat locker and RDS server for IT.
Correct. And if I may, on these, the threat locker is just another level of security that we need to uphold for all of our applications, especially being we have safety personnel. And then the RDS is an upgrade to the server. It's gonna help our applications run a little quicker. We have a problem with some of our civic systems bogging down, so when we're accessing them, or like Public Works, or Chief, when they're working offsite, it will make it run a little more uniformly and seamless.
So this is something we recommend that we need?
Correct.
And we have it budgeted for it?
Correct.
Okay.
Then I'll move to approve threat locker and RDS server.
I have a motion on the table to approve threat locker and RDS server. I have support.
And support.
For Pottingen. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
And then on that note, there was a phishing scam that was sent to all of you that are on the city. Well, should have a tally of who passed, who failed, by numbers. So hopefully I can get that to you shortly.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a, to see if you recognized phishing, or if there's a fake URL, or a fake, if you opened it, or what you did with it. So, I don't know, it went out sometime in the last two weeks, and I don't know how many of us passed, or, I mean, if you're not on your website, or your phone a lot, but...
City, the email, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't open a lot, you're probably good.
I'm good.
Now I know.
Alright, next we have Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-three. Insurance sale of temporary general obligation revenue note series twenty-two-three B.
Shannon Sweeney with David Dron Associates. The city has submitted an application to Minnesota Rural Water for temporary financing for the water treatment project. It's meant to be used to fund engineering costs up until a point in time that bids are received. It's expected at that time you would be eligible for funding through the state of Minnesota that could be used to pay off this temporary financing. Most of the costs are engineering-related, but there are others, you know, soil borings and such, things like that, that typically get done in the early phases of a project, that the engineer is estimated would be covered by the amount to be borrowed, which is six hundred thousand dollars for preliminary project costs, roughly seventy-six thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars for capitalized interest, and then no issuance costs of sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Assuming that it would be paid off early, ultimately the capitalized interest that is unspent could be applied for the repayment. In the interim, you'd be able to invest proceeds, probably at an interest rate that's as good as, or even better than what you'd be paying on this note, because for him, for example, money market accounts through the League of Minnesota Cities, of which you're probably a member, are paying interest at a higher rate than this. So ultimately, carrying that money shouldn't cost you anything. It's a three-year term, which is the maximum term allowed under state statute. It can be prepaid at any time without penalty. And so ultimately, this is meant to get you to the process of bidding the project, at which time you'd be eligible to access state funding that you're currently in the process of applying for. Again, interest rate on the notes, four and a half percent, three-year term, prepayment at any time without penalty, and happy to answer your questions with regard to the resolution that would ward the sale and provide for a closing on or about August twenty-second.
The only question I had, or should say Tom had, was, do we have money to pay for this right now?
You're, oh, I'm sorry. I can address it. You're not paying for anything. You're borrowing this money, and you would have this available to pay bills...
Okay.
Until you can access state funding for the project. So there's no out-of-pocket expense. You're borrowing the costs of issuance, the interest payments in the interim, and so ultimately, this is meant to get you through an award of PFA or state of Minnesota funding, at which time you'll be able to determine what you're gonna have to do with your utility rates in order to accommodate whatever long-term permanent financing that PFA is providing. We're expecting they're gonna provide some additional grant. They could very well have some loan associated with that. At that time, you'd make the determination on the long-term impact to your utility, and what you need to do with water rates in particular at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone got any questions?
Yeah. Did you mention that this money was investable, if it hasn't been spent?
Correct.
But, now a question for Jill. Do we have an outstanding bill already with SCH for the engineering facility plan? Is there already monies that we owe?
Yes, we have a seventy-three thousand dollar bill holding with them, but otherwise we're up to date on that.
When are the other bills coming in, where the facility plan is?
That I don't know when they'll bill us for those.
So, I don't know if we can invest this, because, because we don't, the question's out there, how long would we be able to invest until we have to pay SCH for the plan? Because this is mainly what it's being used for, is engineering fees for this facility plan. So, if we know long-term from SCH, I mean, we could get a six-month CD or something like that. Pardon, go ahead.
The, there are money market account options through the League of Minnesota Cities that are like a checkbook, and they have those funds vested. You can make payments directly from those accounts, and they do pay you interest. And so I think there's options that don't tie the money up for an extended period of time, but pay a similar interest rate that you'd probably wanna explore.
Okay. Thank you.
So it seems to me the question isn't necessarily, can we afford this right now? It seems like we can't afford to not do this right now.
Oh, you have to do it. You have to do it.
So, there it is.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the Resolution twenty-two-three?
I'll make that motion.
It's part.
Alright, motion from Pottingen. I got support from Heitzman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-four. Amending, is this one?
Council President, Paulus, if I may. This was previously approved. What has happened here is, when we went to sign, we realized that nobody caught that it was taxable. So by reopening this up and having it redone, I got a lower interest rate and saved fifteen thousand dollars over the life of the loan. So we are asking you to re-approve it based off the new terms to accept and go forward, and here are the new terms with the payment, with our first payment being due in August of next year.
Okay, so basically, we already approved, now we just gotta redo it, and we saved money doing that.
Correct, and now it'll be non-taxable like we want it to be.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move. Part.
Got a motion from Jeremy, support by Heitzman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Thanks, Shannon.
Authorizing application acceptance of funds from IRRV Development Program FY two-four. Jill, can you speak on that?
Yeah, this one again is just a redo. They've had us reapply for twenty-twenty-four funding, where we applied in twenty-twenty-three, so it's just a new motion. We need to put those fundings after we got our bids done for the actual work, and the full applications have already been made, so we're just approving the resolution then. Should we be approved to move forward?
Okay. I have a motion to approve the Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Move.
Moved by Heitzman. Support?
Support.
Moved by Pottingen. Any discussion? All that in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Next, we have the Northern Lights Dental Purchase Agreement Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-six.
Again, if I may, President Paulus, Council Paulus, tongue-tied.
Good, you're tongue-tied, too. Perfect.
They re-came to the table, so we're basically redoing the same terms. We took out the demolition of the building across the street, and they're looking more for, so that we can go forward. This is a contractor lineup, and is ready to start as soon as we can approve this.
I'll move.
Perfect.
It's part.
Motion from Jeremy, support by Heitzman. Any discussion? Alls I'll say is, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome and thank you.
Welcome to addition.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Next is, Jill, I'll let you speak on the next one, aye there?
So Civic Symposium is our system that we do all of our software through. This is, the first two days are actually virtual. The next two days are Thursday and a Friday, and it's totally hands-on. If you kinda look through the schedule, you can see there is excellent training within here for all of us. Every year they go. I did not go last year, I just had too much on my plate. So I would like to go this year. I would like to have two people go. I just don't know if deputy or whom would be, but I would like to take two people. I don't know if you want me to re-ask later and just approve for me now, just because I don't know the state of things right now. But generally, two people in the office go.
From what I got from the mayor today, when he was talking, is that right now, he only wants one to go...
That's fine.
And to come back and train the rest. So I think we can approve you and all for doing that, and then maybe readjust if we have to.
That works for me.
Do I have a motion on the table to approve the training?
I'll move. Part.
Motion from Jeremy, support by Heitzman. Any discussion?
Just for Jill.
Yes.
Just for Jill as of right now, yes.
And it's a two-day...
It's two days, correct. Monday and Tuesday, everybody in the office can do, because it's here. It's virtual.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. All that in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries four to zero. Go ahead with Jay.
Yes, so this is a cemetery association. Generally, myself and one other person would go from the office. However, this year, we did it a little different. The first year's their hundred year, I believe it's their hundred year, yes, and they are offering a cemetery management course that I will be attending. And Keith Schottabah from the Funeral Home is going to attend with me, however, he will pay his own way, but we're gonna, he's just gonna come underneath our membership. So I did ask a couple of the other members, but no one else was able to go at that timeframe, so Keith stepped up. And I just think it's a great opportunity for us to learn. I mean, our cemetery is always something that we need to improve, and, you know, the management course especially. They've never offered that before, so I'm curious to see what they're gonna offer.
I get a motion to approve the attendance for the annual cemetery conference?
Move.
Moved by Heitzman. Support?
All support.
Support by Jeremy. Any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion on this. I don't think we need to attend this. You know, I'm looking at what they're offering, what kind of grass to put down, you know. And we've had this cemetery for over a hundred years. I think we've done a good job as it is, and all cemeteries are unique, you know, and we have our own unique cemetery that we've been taking care of for years, so I don't think anybody has to go down. Mr. Schottabah's going already for us, and he can bring back any information that we need.
That's fine. It's just the management course. That's a great learning experience. They've never offered it before.
I don't think we need a learning experience. We've had this cemetery long enough. We should have learned everything about it by now. And like I say, all cemeteries are unique. They all have their own ways of doing things, and I think, I think it's just, to me, it's not worth it. As long as Mr. Schottabah's there to get all the information we need, I think that's enough.
And I would throw out there, yeah, we've had this cemetery for a hundred years, but just within the last, say, I don't know, five to ten years, we ran into issues where plots are overlapping, and so it's not to say that our management of our cemetery has been spot-on for all of those hundred years. And I, for one, I'm a big proponent of ongoing training and exploring and learning how other people are doing it, so that we can improve the way that we do ours. That's why I would make the motion to approve attendance at the conference.
Okay. And also, I'll add to that, that the mayor is all aboard with the training. He thinks it'd be a good idea, so.
Did you look at what they were offering for the tour of the Lakewood Cemetery?
I don't normally do the tours.
Could that benefit us?
And I won't argue that there's probably some things that won't or can't apply ever to what we have, but it's not to say that we are alone in a bubble and can't learn from anyone else either.
Yeah, and that's why Mr. Schottabah can teach us. He's a perfect candidate.
We don't have to go next year. If it doesn't work out for us, well, we'll be not this year.
Alright, all that in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
No.
Motion carries three to one. Bob voting, no. Any miscellaneous that we've missed?
I have a question for Attorney Lindsey. Some while back, we had discussed evaluations.
That process is not complete, but I believe I spoke with Clerk Zoller earlier this afternoon, and we're moving forward.
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's in the best, at this point.
Alright, thanks.
If it, you know, we can revamp it next year, but for now, I think it's a good idea just to keep moving forward.
Any more discussion on that? Anything else to add? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move. Part.
Motion by Jeremy, support by Heitzman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Meeting is adjourned at seven-thirty-three PM. Thank you.